I'm sorry, your, like, any problems?
Hello?
It's not serviceable.
Testing, testing. Testing, 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 testing. You still on here? Hello?
... been so impactful here in this community and across the nation. And has recently accepted the role of Executive Director of Rainbow Push. And they're doing a lot of good work in Memphis and throughout. So at this time, I'm going to bring up Dr. Joseph Cowles.
The third grade that individuals start to in law enforcement began to plan for their future. So this pipeline to prison and we're trying to stop that. And so it's always great to have law enforcement who are serious about rehabilitation, particularly when it comes to youth and how our young people are processed and how they are charged and what is their path back. And if you are not aware of it, the state also has a bill to deal with blended sentencing. And if you've not heard about it, it's an issue where students or juveniles, if they have one felony, they only have the opportunity before they turn 18 to have a second felony. And if they have that second felony, they are guaranteed to do prison time. And so this is detrimental to our community. And we have to start sharing that information with our community, with our schools, our teachers, our churches and individuals so they'll know it's law. It's blended sentencing and it's law. And so I'm also thankful to have an individual in law enforcement who served almost 25 years. And when I speak with him, he is always talking to me about rehabilitation and what we can do to protect our children as opposed to making these individuals long-term residents in the system. And so Chief Deputy, would you stand? Chief Deputy Buckner, thank you for all of your work. We certainly appreciate you and what you're doing with Shelby County. Now, we're going to have our opening statements. And first up will be the extremely knowledgeable Mr. John Bush, President of the Memphis and Shelby County Principals Association. Y'all give him a round of applause.
So good evening, everybody. It's hard for me to kind of stand behind this because I move a lot. But we're all here tonight because we're here to talk about saving not only our students but our schools. So I don't know, you know, how well versed you are in the legislation that's being talked about or decision that's being made about the students here in Memphis and Shelby County. I think a lot of us are kind of lost with one decision that was made about leadership, but it has nothing to do with that. It's a whole lot more than just that. Has something to do with the students here in Memphis and Shelby County. I've had the pleasure of serving in three communities in this wonderful city, North Memphis, Southeast Memphis, and now I'm at South Wind High School. The time that I've spent in every community as a principal, I loved it. Time when I taught as a teacher, I loved it. It's about the children. It's not about anything else. It's about providing children the best opportunity, the best education that we possibly can. If you look at what the state is proposing, they're proposing a bill that'll come in and break up this district and break it into pieces. And the way it's designed is to come in and if a school is failing, is to make the school into a charter. Charters are for profit. They're for profit. They don't care about educating students. If you look at the ASD, that was ran by the state, it was a monumental failure. It's the truth. You can fact check everything that I'm telling you. And I'm speaking from my heart. I'm speaking because I absolutely love what I do, right? And so when we think about what's at stake, and look, and we, you know, every time we come, we have more and more people, this is great, but this place should be packed. This should be standing room only. Because we're talking about the children of Memphis and Shelby County. That's what we're talking about. Because if the state has their way and they're able to come in and they're able to take our lower performing schools and change them into charters, the quality of education that your child is going to receive is going to drastically change. Charters don't hire certified teachers. Some charters don't even have certified administrators. And if you don't know what that means, that simply means administrator went to college, passed, passed a practice exam, they've been vetted, and they know the moves to make the run of school. This job is a hard job, but we do the job because we love it. Teachers get up every day to come to a place that they can educate kids. The difference between our district now and a charter ran school, charters are at will. They can go in and recruit a teacher. They can decide that teacher can leave tomorrow, no questions asked. Whereas in our case, doesn't work that way. So when you think about the decision that's being made in Nashville, and I don't have a racist bone in my body, I swear I don't. I love everybody. But the people that are making the decision don't look like the majority of the kids in Memphis and Shelby County. I'm not making it about race, but I'm just calling it like it is, right? So as a principal who served in this community, who understands how to move a school academically, I've taken over three failing schools, and I've moved every last one of them. But I ain't moving by myself. I moved them with teachers and people who came from all walks of life, all over the city, who love what they did. And that's what it's about. So if you take the time, you all, and really dig into the bill, there's two of them. One from Britt Taylor and one from Marla White. Read the bill. Read what they're talking about doing. If, and I'm gonna say this, I'm going to close with this. So if we want to talk about the school board, I'll touch it. If we want to say that. Well, there's a mechanism in place for that. It's called voting. Vote. If you don't like the decisions that were made, you have a right to vote. But the way this bill is designed, your right goes away. Right that you've earned that people died for. So when you think about it, what it is that we're here talking about, we're talking about our future. Look at Houston. Look at what happened. Look at what's happening in Houston. What continues to happen. Memphis Shelby County Schools has a $2.1 billion budget. And if you come in and if you break the district up and you sell it to charters, right? You sell it to charters. Who profits from that? Where do resources go? Right? So this is what we're dealing with. It's not about educating students. And there's a part in the bill that I think that everyone really needs to pay attention to. This part of the bill is that the charters come in, they get to hand pick the kids. They get to pick them. They get to pick them. Now, as a principal, if I could just sit there and just stand there all day and just pick kids, I'm gonna pick kids that's predicted to pass the T cap, don't have no discipline and do everything they supposed to do. Does that mean I'm gonna come to school and we just gonna do schools? No problem, everything's gonna be fine. That's what charters are gonna do. Then the little bit of money that's left in the schools that they didn't pick, that they decided to leave alone, that decided to stay in the district, that's where the, that's where the kids ain't nobody want. That's where they at, right? I don't know about y'all. But when I go home every day, I turn on the lights, I walk in the house, nice, clean, comfortable house, I can do what I need to do. Can't nobody tell me or my wife anything about that house if we pay the bills down. But if I had to come there every day, we pay the bills, we work, but somebody was telling me, you can't go in this room, you can't do that, can't sleep here, can't watch this TV, can't eat, get this out the fridge. But I'm paying the bills. I made the decisions. I would have a problem with that. So when you think about your tax dollars, and you think about your children, and you think about somebody coming in that lives in Nashville that does not look like you, that does not have a vested interest in you and your child, and they gonna make the decision for you. And you voted for people. And they saying, well, no, that don't matter. They don't know what they doing. We gonna take over. But that's what we're dealing with, you all. I'm telling y'all, this place should be packed with people concerned about their children, about their children's future, about their education. I'm gonna tell y'all, you know, this is where we are. This is a scary place to be. Our country is a scary place to be right now, right? It's not this in Tennessee. But I want you all to really take the time. Tell a friend who know a friend, got a cousin, read, read both bills. I have them up on my computer every morning. I look for updates every day. Because I'm terrified of what it could mean for our children. I got into this, y'all, in 2004. I was a probation officer. And I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna take my seat. I got into this because I was a, I was a probation officer when I first got out of college, going 201 popular every day. I was 23 years old, 1993. And I got tired, tired of seeing young men who look like me. And I figured if I got into education at 34, I can make a difference. Started teaching and coaching at Kingsbury. Principal there saw something in me and asked me to get into administration. And I started my journey, Chimney Rock Elementary as a AP, two years at BTW. And I came to North Memphis and turned Douglas around. And been doing this ever since. And I have a passion for this. Because the key thing that I said, I wanted to stop young men who look like me from coming to 201 popular. Thought Terry O. Stand up. When I got to Douglas in 2016, he was in 11th grade. He graduated from Douglas. He graduated from Harrell Stowe. He's an English teacher at South Wind High School. And he ain't come here because he had to come. He came because I say, hey, man, this what we doing? He read for himself. I didn't have to tell him anything. But when I say something and I put my mouth on it, I got in this for a reason. Because young men like him. So I can make a difference. So I ain't telling y'all, I'm not making up anything. I ain't got a bone in this fight. I'm good. I'm fine. But read, you all. Think about the future. Young man like him, he is our future. He is. But we gotta pay attention, y'all. And we can do something about it. Because if we start fighting, and if we start, not, not literally, y'all, but, but if we start saying something about it, if we start going up to Nashville, making our presence known, making our desires known, what we want about our own community, we can change it. But if we just sit back and we don't say anything, and we just let it happen, it's gonna happen. Everything that Mr. Redwang and his group and they're doing, they're trying. There are other organizations, UEA is here. Everybody's trying. But we got to be unified. We can't do it in pockets. We got to be unified. We got to be one voice, one sound, and it's about the children. Ain't about nothing else. It's about giving them the best opportunity they can to be successful. World is already hard. We don't make it, we don't need to make it any harder by doing, providing our students with disadvantage. So I hope y'all heard me. I hope you hear my heart. Hope you feel my passion. Absolutely love what I do. I love this city. Been here a long time. And I've seen a lot. We got time. We got to make up our mind what we're going to do. We have strategy. We got people that's willing to lead. We got to be able to follow. And we got to make our voices known if we won't change. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bush. No pun intended. President Bush, we certainly appreciate that. Let me take a little bit of privilege here to thank First Baptist Broad and Dr. Keith Norman. When you take a look around this community and just Memphis at large, you see economic development. And this is really what our churches and our organization should be about. And so we want to really just give a great thanks to First Baptist Broad and Dr. Keith Norman and the staff here. Thank you all so much. I'm reminded of when Dr. King first came to Memphis, there was not very many churches that would host him. And so it takes courage from individuals to stand up to those who want to take $2 billion from your community. So just by the fact of having that relationship with Chairman Redwang and the clergy that he's been able to bring together shows courage and dedication to the community. And we cannot forget that. Next up, we have, as I said, all of these individuals have institutional wisdom. But Ms. Rivers brings a special attitude of compassion and understanding and knowing exactly what the district has done. You've not heard much about the achievements. I can remember at the last town hall meeting, my dear cousin, Ms. Stewart, excuse me, Ms. Stewart Reed, sorry, cousin, told us some very interesting facts and statistics. And one that stuck out for me, and she'll probably have an opportunity to talk further as our panelists are done, was $3 million that's in the governor's budget for a forensic audit of Memphis and Shelby County schools. $3 million. It's already in that budget. And then 7,400 or whatever that is, and that number fluctuates, per student that will leave the district. And so we want Mrs. Rivers to give us some intel and some information on how we empower. So let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Dolores Rivers, Memphis and Shelby County interim executive director.
Um, we can leave because Principal Bush summarized everything while we here. But I am Dolores Rivers and I am the interim executive director for Memphis Shelby County Education Association. And it is my pleasure to be here today because anytime that I can come out and advocate for students and teachers, I want to be in the place. I just want to recognize a couple of people that have gone, know my work. And I want to recognize our incoming president, Charlotte Fields from MSEA, who I volunteered to come. And in the back, some people I worked with forever, Principal Vonda, Principal Dr. Vonda Beatty of Whitney Elementary, and one of my very good friends, D. Rob, DeShawna Robinson, Dina student at Whitney Elementary. And so they're boots on the ground, doing work, doing great things at Whitney. So I love you guys for participating. But the main thing that I can say today is that we need to come together. We need to stop fighting among each other, disparaging other groups, and always trying to one up one another. We need to come together for this fight. We cannot, there's, if this room was full, but still, there is a lot of power in this room. We have We have educators, we have parents, we have teachers, we have preachers. There is a lot of power here. And we need to take that power and fight together on this fight. We are not going to be able to accomplish anything constantly being divided and, and disparaging and creating a divisive, uh, environment. We have to come together and fight for our students. Like Principal Bush said, this room should be full. This room should be full. And I guess the next time, I'll do a better job of getting the message out. And I know, uh, Principal Bush will do, and, and even Ms. Marable, just getting, uh, the people out. But it's good to see the people who are here because that means you're concerned about what's going on, and you want to make a difference. And that's what we need to do, we need to hold hands and stick together and do this thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivers. You know, some of the talking points that I think would be helpful, when you talk to your neighbors, your friends, your families, uh, let's say Principal Bush at his school receives an annual budget of $15 million. That's to run the school. And, and let's say that if this actually happens, this state take over, um, the first thing that's going to be, there's going to be a major reduction in Principal Bush's budget. And who's the first people to be hurt? It's the teachers. Because when the students leave, the enrollment goes down, and the jobs go down. And so this, when you hear people saying, yeah, I want the state to take over, that's an, and I don't mean any harm, that's an uneducated response. No one in their right mind wants to take money from their own household. And I thought that analogy that you put together was beautiful. No one says, come into my community and take the opportunities. I look around and I see we have great business leaders in, um, in this crowd. I see we have great faith leaders and community activists around. I see one of your classmates, I step back and talk to her. You know, that is the compassion that we have to push forward. So as we move, those are some of the talking points. If someone else comes in and can run your budget and take over, uh, the first people that are going to be hurt are the ones that do the most work for the least amount of pay. All right, next up, we've got Liz Marable, who is the president of United Education Association of Shelby County. And Liz has been doing a tremendous work along with her colleagues. Uh, I think she was in Nashville yesterday and today, and, um, she was talking with, uh, one of my closest cousins this morning, and they were having some conversations. So Liz can really come and give us the nuts and bolts about what's going on and what we can expect in this legislation. Let's give her a round of applause.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, I want to recognize a couple of people as well. Although you did, uh, allude to them, I want to tell you, as the president of the United Education Association, the largest teachers' union in, in this district, uh, we never step over other presidents. So I'd like to recognize the president of MSCA, Dr. Antrinise Napper. Also, we have another president in the House. She's the president of the Tennessee Urban Education Association, and her name is Dr. Danette Stokes. Furthermore, one more person that he alluded to, but I want you to know the tremendous work this woman does as well. She's our director of intergovernmental policy and affairs, Maria Stewart. Please stand. She, uh, this lady, she keeps us abreast not every day, not every half-day, on the hour mostly. Uh, so we appreciate you deeply for the work you're doing for our school district. I just want to say a couple of things quickly. I know that Mr. Bush talked about failing schools. But I want to know, now, teachers, please don't answer this, okay? Because I see you out there. Does anybody know what qualifies you for being a failing school that's not a Memphis Shelby County school employee? All right? Test scores, great, that has a whole lot to do with it. Um, so let's talk about test scores. What makes a kid fail? First of all, if you take a test, you normally know what the passing grade is, right? We don't know. Teachers don't know. Students don't know. You see my comrade, Charlotte Fields, right here, the incoming president shaking her head. We don't know. When we administer those tests starting this week, teachers and students don't know what a passing score is. You know why? There's not a passing score. The state doesn't establish the passing score until all tests are taken, until they score them, and then they decide what passing is. That is done on purpose to make sure some schools fail. That has got to stop, and the public has to know. Let's talk about third graders. Third graders are eight years old. So my question to you, as I tear everything up, thank you, Mr. Bush. My question to you, I'm so sorry. My question to you is, you don't have to raise your hand. Have you ever taken a test over because you didn't do well? How many of you took, you don't have to raise your hand. How many took the ACT to get into college more than once? How many took your praxis test to teach more than once? How many of you were attorneys and you took the LSAT more than once? How many were medical school, took the MCAT more than once? How many stayed out of med school for a whole year to study, to pass the MCAT, and they do surgery on you now? It is criminal, y'all. It is criminal that we're taking eight-year-old girls and boys and giving them a test and saying, you failed because on one day they didn't pass the reading test. But to be fair, the state says, okay, we're gonna let you retest seven days later. You have seven days to retest. So you're really gonna improve that much in seven days? It is criminal what they are doing to these kids. And somebody, somewhere, has to stand with educators and be angry. You have to be angry about it. And you have to be knowledgeable about what they're doing to us. And I'm saying us because I am with these kids. I'm a Memphis City School graduate in 1979. I went off to college, came back in 1983, and I've been here ever since as a math teacher. I love this city. I love these kids. Now, he talked about Dartario West. I knew Dartario well before he came to Douglas. Dartario is a success story. As a freshman in high school at Douglas, he decided he wanted to be a school administrator. So one of the greatest principals I've never known, ever, ever known, Janet Ware Thompson, she decided to give him a walkie-talkie, he could be the student principal. He cleared halls, she saw something in him. He was different. And now he is on his way to that job. So there are so many. Myself, I've got currently in this school district 49 people that I coached in basketball or volleyball or track, that are teachers. Education is the great equalizer, and we can't let them take that from us. Our kids deserve better, you all. I need you to get your neighbors, your church members, your cousins, as Maria said, even the ones that moved out of town, to get in this fight with us. We cannot continue to work in silos. I'm really proud of my school district because they're bringing groups together to work together. And like Dr. Napper and I, the unions are trying to work together. These kids are not failing. The people that are failing are in Nashville, that they refuse to address poverty in this city. They refuse to invest in neighborhoods in this city. Elon Musk. The only jobs he's given to people in Memphis are janitors and security. Let's tell it like it is. And we have three other tech giants coming in here to follow him. So why are they really interested in us? Elon Musk and three other tech giants. Let's tell the truth. We cannot let them dismantle this school district over, they say a school board's vote about the superintendent. Y'all, it's been more than a decade. They just finally got some people that don't look like me shouting and saying, take them away. But people that look like me, that's the one that are taking them. I was talking to Maria, I can't stand their arrogance. Every time I go to the Capitol, I feel dirty when I leave. Although it's a clean-looking place, but it's so dirty, it's so underhanded. You've got to stand up and fight from every corner. Like I told them today in the interview, from downtown to Germantown, from South Memphis to North Memphis, to every corner, to every part of this city and county, you got to reach everybody you know. And quit letting them say our children are failing. We had a child recently come to the microphone at the school board meeting, and he even told the school board, he said, one of you constantly says, we can't read. This eighth grader said, that hurts us. Quit saying we can't read. I want you to take any third grader you know, they're taking the test now. And if they fail the test, I just want you to pull a random book out and hand to them, say, hey, just open any page and read it to me. You'll be amazed at these children that they say can't read. It's a lie. It is a lie, and they continue to perpetuate in black and brown school districts that these, they're telling you your children are ignorant, and you got to get angry. Because they're not ignorant. Raise your hand if you graduated from Memphis City or Memphis Shelby County. Are you ignorant? Well, they're saying you were when you were eight years old. That's what they're saying. One day's test should not define a child. And even more, one day's test should not define a teacher. The teachers get up every day. These teachers in this city are here because they love the children. Is it hard some days? Well, you know it's hard to love your own some days. And if you've ever tried to tutor your own child, you know you can't teach them. Come on now. Especially if you tried to help them with mathematics. Okay? So I'm just telling you, appreciate the teachers. So the Houston model that they continue to talk about, let's talk about Houston, Texas. We were on phone calls this week with the Houston, Texas Education Association president, and also with the president from Little Rock, Arkansas. But they took their schools over in 2015. You need to listen to what is being said. Forty-five percent of the certified teachers were let go in the first year. Somebody tried to shout me down and said, oh, you don't know they'll take our contracts? I do know. I do know. They're even telling you, we're modeling Houston ISD. In Tennessee, they called it ASD. Okay? Now they're gonna call it a whole new name, but it's just ASD 2.0. They took so many schools across this state, mostly in black and, black and brown urban districts. And they were, the bottom 5%. Now, look, anytime you rank things, there's gonna be a bottom 5%. If you move those, there's gonna be another bottom 5%, okay? There shouldn't be a bottom 5%. If you want to have a cut score, have a cut score. But just don't take the bottom five. They kept those schools for 10 years. They were miserable failures. Their goal was to take the bottom 5%, 33 schools here in Memphis, and they were gonna put them in the top 25%. Ask me how many made it? None. Three schools showed a little bit of improvement, and the other 30 went down lower. So they've been failures. So what's to say now they, all of a sudden, they know what to do? They don't. They're trying to get this $2 billion budget. Exactly. So you gotta, like I said, you gotta get everybody. Even that neighbor you don't really like, go talk to them. Tell them what's going on. Do not sell your children, your grandchildren, your neighbor's children out in this city. I'll tell you right now, I'm pro-public school all the way. If you, if you're gonna support public schools, I can vote for you. I am not a charter school advocate. Every year we get our money, we have to send so much of it to charter schools. Now, I know people don't really truly understand charter schools, but he spoke to that as well. Charter schools mostly have one lead teacher. A lead teacher is the certified teacher, and the rest of them aren't certified. We go through a lot of training to be certified. We take 64 hours every school year. Am I right or wrong, teachers? 64 hours every school year to make sure we stay abreast of everything that's going on. Our district makes us do that. You know how many the state makes us do? 24 hours every five years. Memphis Shelby County requires we do 64 extra hours. That's eight workdays. Per year. They do care about these kids. And now I want to speak to the media, please listen. Please start telling the great stories and not just about athletics and state championships. Please tell the great stories. We have so many great stories every day in this district. Please tell what these black and brown children are doing that is great. We have incredible children in this district. We have incredible educators in this district. We have the only mental health department across the state. They do incredible work. I will tell you right now, I believe we don't have school shootings. We don't have so many things that you see all around the country, right here. Because of two things. We have our own SROs, that's our school resource officers, and they learn de-escalation. They know the kids that have problems. We have our own mental health team. They know the kids that are homeless, they know the kids that have problems, they know the families that have problems. They intervene every single day for us. Don't let them take this away because they'll take the mental health department. And what happens to those kids? We are truly public, we don't cherry pick anybody. We don't care what you look like, what your clothes are like, what your academic levels like, what your home life's like. We'll be your mother, your father, your brother, your cousin, your mental health support. We'll be your church leader. We just want to lift children, but we cannot do it without you all. If you haven't volunteered at a school, if you can't volunteer, do something. Everybody can do something. So that's what I want to leave you today with, two words, do something.
Thank you, Liz. Powerful and compassionate, Liz Marable, United Education Association Shelby County president. You know a labor leader when you hear one. Who just happens to be a, a teacher. And that's wonderful to have that kind of balance. Uh, we're gonna have time for Q and A, we're gonna spend about 15 minutes for Q and A. But before we do that, I saw, uh, my dear cousin come in, and I'd like for the president of the Memphis 13 Foundation to stand, Ms. Dewana Kyles. Dewana and, um, 12 of her classmates integrated Memphis City Schools back in the early 60s. And what we see now is a road back to segregation, but this time it's not about color. It's simply about the haves and the have-nots, and it's about economics. And it's, it's how they draw the lines, and it's the resources, and it's the money. And so, uh, it's interesting, the story that, uh, Dewana and her classmates, uh, also have a curriculum in Memphis and Shelby County schools. And they're dealing with the healing component. And those, that's just one program, and there may be hundreds. Ms. Stewart Reed will tell us more about what we're gonna lose if we don't fight. Uh, it's very important for us to understand and process that because this is a re-segregation, but it's based on money. And we have to fight. And one of my closest and dearest friends, uh, the president emeritus of Rainbow Push, Reverend Jesse Jackson, says, you don't drown because the water overtakes you. You drown when you stop kicking. And so I'm so thankful to see all of you here and being so supportive, and you keep kicking. So give, uh, Ms. Maria Stewart Reed a hand as she comes, and she's gonna just share a little bit of information with us. Liz was there, as I said earlier, uh, in Nashville today, and, and they are moving. We expect that we're gonna see, um, some, what the actual bill will look like from the House and Senate. And I think it's important that we get the real facts. Information is power.
So as, um, my cousin just mentioned, there are two bills on the floor right now, or that's going through committee. And we received two amendments today. Actually, we received three amendments today. So I just quickly want to go through what these amendments will do. You have a House version, and you have a Senate version. So the triggers in the House version, 50% or more of the students did not meet grade level expectations on the most recent standardized test. 30% or more of the LEA schools received a DRF letter grade from the State Department of Education. 25% or more of the students were chronically absent. At least one school in the LEA has been identified as a priority school by the state for the last five consecutive, um, lists. And the local county legislative body passed a resolution expressing a no-confidence vote. Now, who is that? That's us. We're the only school district. We're the only school district in the state that has received a vote of no confidence. On the Senate side, on the Senate side, 50% or more of the student population is economically disadvantaged. 50% or more of the student population did not meet grade level expectations in math, in English, language arts, and at least one school in the LEA has been identified as a priority school. The composition of the Oversight Board, on the House side, there will be a state-appointed Oversight Board with nine members. All of those members have to reside within Shelby County. Five will be appointed by the governor, two by the Speaker of the House, and two by the Speaker of the House of Representatives, and two by the Senate Speaker. So a total of nine. Two appointed, already mentioned that, by the Speaker of the Senate. The Oversight Board will have sole authority to appoint and remove members, and members will be compensated at the same way that our local board will be. I did not say that you can vote for any of these members, right? They will all be appointed by a state person, either the governor or the Speaker of the House or the Speaker of the Senate. In the Senate bill, we will also have nine members, all of which must reside within Shelby County. Three will be appointed by the governor, two appointed by the Speaker of the Senate, and two appointed by the Speaker of the House of Representatives. The county mayor, or the county mayor's designee, and if applicable, the city mayor. Again, I did not say that as citizens, you will be able to vote on any of these individuals. They will be appointed. And I wanna skip down on the House, in the House bill, that state-appointed Oversight Board will serve for three consecutive years. And based upon the recommendation of the Commissioner of Education, that timeframe can be extended out three additional years, which will be a total of six years. So that means that you will have this state-appointed Oversight Board, who can serve up to six years. On the Senate side, those individuals will serve for four years, but it can be extended up to two additional years. Now, the powers of the Oversight Board. On the House side, and this is new language from the amendment that we received today, they will have oversight of two things. The first thing is budget approval. The second thing that they will have oversight of is underutilized property. And there's a third provision in the bill that deals with charter schools, where they can expand charter schools. We cannot, the board pretty much will be stripped of its ability to deny a charter school expansion, a new charter school coming in, et cetera. Again, I wanna mention those things that, on the House side, the House bill will allow oversight for, and that's what? Budget control and property. I did not say academics, not one time. Budget and real estate. Somebody mentioned earlier that we have a $2.1 billion budget. So again, I repeat, on the House side, the amended version of the House bill provides oversight for budget approval, contract and expenditure approvals, all of this is budget, and underutilized property. In the Senate version, you have... On the Senate side, it's a little bit more convoluted than that. Ma'am, Liz, do you remember everything that the Senate version allows for?
Yeah. So the Senate version, actually, you know, they have a $3 million forensic audit. They added another $3 million today. Now it's going to be a $6 million. And I wonder what we could do with a school if we had $6 million extra dollars. So they'll, they'll spend money for an audit, but they won't spend money for these school buildings that are 100 years old or more. Also, I just want you to make sure that you know this. This is about money and control. These are radical people that are going to take over this county. These are radical ideas that are gonna take over this county. They love to say it's about the kids. It is not about these children. It's about those two things. It's about the money and the land. And I don't know if you know, Einstein said this, buy up land, you're not making any more of it.
That's right, that's right. Also, in the Senate version of the bill, any expenditure or any contract that's over $50,000 will have to have the approval by this board, this state-appointed board. So again, that's pointing back to what? Money.
So Maria, you did ask me a question that I didn't include, and you just kinda prodded my memory. So right now, when a charter comes in, they have to come through our Shelby County Board of Education and our board commissioners. But with this, they'll just go directly to the state of Tennessee, and you can imagine what they're gonna tell them. Charter, charter, charter. That takes more money from our children, and somebody else mentioned it earlier. So what happens? So we will have larger class sizes, fewer educators, and once again, they'll just come in, just like the private schools try to do already, take our best athletes, take our best students, and leave us with everything else. But we still come to work every day. So beware of what these radical ideas are gonna do. This is nothing but state control over a huge budget.
And I don't want us to lose sight or just be focused in on the expansion of charter schools. If you, I don't know if you know or not, but there are currently three different types of vouchers in Tennessee. The first one was implemented a few years ago for your disabled students. And then they had a pilot program that was specific to Memphis, Metro Nashville, and then they brought in Hamilton County. That was the ESA program, Education Savings Account Program, but it's still a fancy word for vouchers. This year, they passed what's called the EFA, and that's a universal voucher program. It does not have an income limit. You can be Bill Gates' child, and you can be eligible for a voucher to send your child to a private school in the state of Tennessee. So under both versions of this takeover bill, vouchers is included in both. That's the common language in both. Vouchers and charter school is the common language. But again, I need you to remember, the two things that they speak clearly about in both versions of the bill is budget and real estate. And I wanna leave you with this. I thought about this the other night. I kept hearing that we had to do something. There was such a loud outcry coming from Shelby County that we had to do something. We had to take action, because so many people contacted our offices. Have you all heard that too? Do you remember back in 2024, Shelby County had such a loud outcry against guns? We wanted gun control. They didn't listen to us. There was a loud outcry. We ended up with a referendum with three different items on their referendum, and on each one, it passed, saying that Shelby County wanted gun control. But they did not hear our voices then, but they are hearing the voices of a smaller group of individuals coming out of Shelby County, saying, "Take over our school district."
Maria, it's also important to know, I told you she's incredible. But it's also important to know, like states that are not far from here, like Kentucky, they put the vouchers on their ballots, and they vote it down every year. Tennessee will not even let it come to a vote, so we, the people, can decide if we want vouchers. We have to demand that our state let us be the people that make that decision. We have a few people at the Capitol that make all these things happen, and they just do it for their cronies. So you gotta understand, if they get our schools, they're cronies. They're, we'll get the contracts. They're cronies. They'll make millions and millions and millions of more dollars. It's the same people making money off of urban districts that are black and brown districts. Our good friend, President Paula Pendergrass in Nashville, Davidson County, she was on the hill with me yesterday. She joined hands with us, as we turned in over 5,000 petitions yesterday, a thing that we did in four days. And when I say "we," I mean "we," all of us did it, okay? But we have, we need 50,000. But Paula Pendergrass was the president of the Metro Nashville Education Association. You know why she came to walk with me yesterday? Because she said, "Liz, it'll be just like vouchers." It was Shelby County, but all they did the next year is they changed the Shelby to Davidson. And they know in Nashville, they're coming after them next. And then they go to Chattanooga, and then they go to Knoxville, and then they'll attack the rural counties last, because a lot of the rural counties look like them. Or look like me. Let me be clear, because I'm, I look like them, but I don't think like them. And I will say this, all of us don't think like them. And if you think they don't like you, they really can't stand folks that look like them that don't agree with them.
But you're standing on principle, and that's why we're here. We're thankful to have all of these individuals that, and let's give Maria Stuart Reed a round of applause for giving us that, that information, because information is power. So now we wanna open it up for Q and A. We have individuals who are here that would like to ask this esteemed panel some questions and get the answers that you can take back to your communities. So who has a Q, okay? Yes, yes, please stand.
I'm a parent of two children that go to Grisley's Prep. I really would love to say that we could get 50,000 signatures in a day, you know? But as a parent, and I don't know how many of you all are active parents right now in the school system, our belief in the system is frayed dramatically. And I appreciate you educational professionals coming in every day, working with our kids. It is not easy. I have said in classrooms, it is not easy. But we desire an outcome. And for our children who come home to us, and we feel like they're mixing marks, and when we go to the school, we get almost things like, you know, "It's gonna be okay. Don't worry. They gonna make it, it's gonna be okay." It does not leave us to want to push for education, because what are we pushing for? It's gonna be okay? It's just good enough? When we get through with this fight, because I was part of the fight, the ASD fight, I was on the policy council 10 years ago, and we're here again. Same conversations. I'm writing it down, the same stuff. If we don't want people to come and attack our school system, then we need to study what the problem is. Not throw out all type of regurgitated anecdotes, but we need to study what the problem is. I did not hear a solution or a plan tonight.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. I really appreciate that. What I wanna say before the panel starts, I think if you were listening to the panelists, this is, this takeover is not about a lack of achievement, and, and not to dismiss what parents are feeling in respect of schools. And so we understand that there is an opportunity to do better in all of our careers, our professions. But I, I understand as a parent that you are seriously concerned about the development of your child's mind. And so I wanna just open that up to the panel.
Ma'am, what's your name? Latoya, I feel your pain. I felt that when you said that. And we have to continue to have hope in our district. And I know you're looking like, and I know we're going to, through a very unstable time. But this is why we're here. We wanna hear things like that. We want to know what and how, and hear from parents about how, what we can do to make this better for parents, and also, you know, for the students. And I was like you, I was an active parent, I was at everything. But we have to continue to be informed. And, and another thing is that parents like you are the parents that show up. So, and that's another battle. That's another thing that we have to see how we can work and get those parents here and just try to work together. It's, it's, it's not gonna be easy, because we feel all of that. And I know, you know, we're struggling every day, just trying to think about how we can make this better. Because I know people have lost faith in the education system, they've lost faith in the school board, they lost faith in the unions, and we're just trying to rebuild that trust. And we want to make sure that we are trying to do what's best. And when we come to things like this, this is just a start, because like you said, this is nothing new. This same old conversation. And so we do have to get innovative and think about ways that we can just band together and build a crowd and get more people involved, so that we can move forward. And I can see the look of frustration, you're like, "Yeah, she's just saying that same old thing."
That's it. And I want, I want, I want Principal Bush to give us the ABCs and 1-2-3s, because this parent asked a very valid question. What are the 1-2-3s and ABCs of it?
So ma'am, I, I heard everything that you said, and you said that you, you didn't hear a plan. So what we're here and what we're talking about is an attempt to take over a district and not provide anything that's even remotely close to what's being provided now. No one said this, I think Coach Marable, she, she touched on it, but when you think about Memphis Shelby County Schools, the district that, that we're talking about, we're not a failing district. So when we talk about academics, because you send, you send your student to school to get an education, to get a good education, but we're not a failing district. We've been a Level 5 district for the last three years. Level 5 is the highest you can get in the state of Tennessee. That's T-VOS, that's growth. That simply means, yeah, we clap, everybody should be clapping that up. But, and, and I'm not, and ma'am, and ma'am, I, 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 I do, I, I feel you. I come from a single parent, and I'm not saying you're single, but I come from a single-parent home. I could just catch a football. That's how I got to Memphis, Tennessee, a long time ago. But my point in, in making this comment, when we think about the district, everything's not, there's nothing perfect, or there's nothing right with everything. There's always room for improvement every day. Every school, I don't care from White Station to Hamilton, right? Every school has issues, has problems. Every parent is not gonna be happy with the decisions that are made. But I can promise you this, teachers get up every day. Administrators get up every day to come, and I know you acknowledge that, and I appreciate that. But when you think about from an academic standpoint, this district, ma'am, I, I don't know if you noticed, but there are 45, 45, 44 plus 1 districts in Tennessee that are currently failing school districts. They're failing. So our job as educators are to support, support students, provide a nurturing environment, but it's also to provide the best education that we can and move a school, if the school is failing, to a school that's no longer failing. Our job every day is to educate students to the best of our ability. Whatever you send to us, our job, whatever, student, boy, girl, is to nurture them and to grow them. That's our job. Do we always get it right? Do we fall short? Yes, ma'am, we do. But the reason and the way that we got here has nothing to do with academics. Everything that Ms. Reed, that Coach Marable said, has nothing to do with academics, ma'am. Nothing.
And so what we...
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. So when you, when you, when you mentioned, when you mentioned a plan, well, the plan is this. So when you, when you, when you mentioned, when you mentioned a plan, well, the plan is this. The plan is to continue to move the district academically. The plan is not to allow someone who does not live here to come in and take over a district and provide, if you want to call it provide, an education that's gonna be far worse than what your student is receiving now. That's the only thing that, you know, we're, we're trying to say. We're trying to stop that. But I feel your pain, I, I really do. And I hate that you're experiencing what you're experiencing.
And what we want to do is afterwards, get you the right contact at the district level to address your concerns, so you'll know that we are, we mean business. So let's talk afterwards, okay? All right.
Good evening. My question is, because I'm going back to what Ms. Stewart Reed said. Who is paying for the people to come in? In other words, who's paying that money for the, the new people they're bringing in? And then what about the people that are already here? Do they just fall by the wayside and we continue to pay them to do nothing? Or the school board? So the school board is paid by the citizens, right? So who pays the people that are coming in, those nine or 10 people? That adds on to correct what our, what we as taxpayers are already obligated to. I am a parent, a former, I mean, my children will see it here. But my children went, all of them are grown. But the fact of the matter is, they, the ones that I helped, not helped, the ones that I made sure and they, all of them knew. So some of it falls back on the parents when you talk about just learning. The parents must step up. The, it's not all on them. It, we need to do something to help. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't find out where that money is going, how are we supposed, how is a district that has no money supposed to pay more people to come in here and take our vote away?
Will still be paid the way that they're paid. That, that's through the county. The state appointed board, be it an advisory board or an oversight board, there's a fiscal note that's attached to the House bill and the Senate bill. So that money should be coming from the state. But even though it's coming from the state, how does the state make its money? Those are taxpaying dollars. So either way it goes, if it's from the county commission, those are our dollars. If it's from the state, those are our dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I'm gonna give you the mic here, but I want to say that was an excellent question. And it's also probably going to be an argument in litigation, because you talked about nullification of a vote. You talked about the budget. Well, the short answer is that it's gonna come out of that $2.1 billion, which are tax dollars.
Yeah, the easy answer is you'll be paying for the nine present board members and the nine new ones. There'll be 18.
Thank you for the question. What you continue to fight for? How we gonna, the parent was asking how we, what, what was the next plan? How we was gonna move forward? And you were trying to explain to me what I was about to get ready to do. And I wanted you to explain, because there's some next steps. Because the loudest group in this city is the parents. Because if you can rally up 2, 3,000 to 5,000 parents and send them to the state capitol, I bet you can get what you need. Because it's been the teachers, it's been, it's been central office. We need to hear from our parents. We need to rally our parents together. Because it's already about the money. It's already about the land. That's why they're driving home. We're still employees of the central office in and of the state. They're not listening to us, but I bet you they'll listen to the parents. So can you, finish?
So I, I can't speak to the specific academic plan. For Memphis Shelby County schools, that is for our current interim superintendent, Dr. Richmond, to speak to that. I have full confidence in Dr. Richmond, that he's able to lead this district, that he's able to move the needle on academics and all of the other things that are associated with student achievement as well as with district operations. So I think Dr. Richmond has a plan in place, but he needs to speak to his plan. And I do need to stop and say that even though I am an employee of the district, I am not speaking on behalf of the district. I'm speaking on behalf of Maria Stewart, the citizen. Maria Stewart Reed, the citizen, okay? I, I want to add this. Bush said that there are 45 school districts. When we talk about failing school districts, and remember there was a part in one of the bills that speaks to a D or F letter grade. And this is not to call out any school districts to embarrass them, okay? Because we're all in this fight together in terms of educating. Hollow Rock, 100%. Humboldt, 100%. Lake County, 100%. Richard City, 100%. These are DNF schools. I'm telling you how many schools they have that are DNF schools. South Carroll, 100%. Johnson County, 75%. Perry County, 75%. Claiborne County, 70%. Clay County, 67.7%. Hancock, 66.7%. Fayette County Public Schools, 57.1%. Morgan County, 57.1%. Scott County, 57.1%. The ASD, which is going away, 53.8%. Haywood County, 50%. Hickman, 50%. Lauderdale County, 50%. Lewis, 50%. Lincoln, 50%. Millington, 50%. Warren County, 50. West Carroll, 50. I still haven't reached our school district. Madison County, 45.8%. Franklin County, 45.5%. Monroe County, 45.5%. Hardeman County, 44.4%. Gals, 42.9%. Harden, 42.9%. Campbell, 41.7%. Cannon, 40%. Then Memphis Shelby County schools, 38.7%. Now, out of those other school districts with 100%, all the way down to 38.7%, have you heard about the state trying to step in?
No.
And take over any of those other school districts? Not one.
Maria, Maria, am I correct that that's 42 counties that are lower than Shelby County?
45.
45 lower? I thought we were 43rd.
No, it's 45.
Anyhow, there's 40 plus lower than us, and they're not taking any of them. So they're your facts.
Okay, we've got two more questions in the queue. And before we do our closing and have, you, yeah, yeah, one and then over. And then we'll have Chairman Red Wing come up and close us out.
So I think the, like the takeover or the, I think the facade trigger was the firing of the superintendent, right? And parents and students and everybody had a lot of faith in the superintendent, regardless of like where they, how they felt the district was performing. With, like, is there a plan to like restore parents and teach, and students and everybody else's faith in this superintendent, right? Or like, and what does that plan look like?
So.
Yeah.
So I'll say.
Principal Bush?
Yeah, I'll say this. So I get a chance to, Principal Association, we get a chance to meet with Dr. Richmond every other week. We actually meet with him tomorrow. So he has a vision for the district in restoring the academic plan that was in place. He's proposing to put the, the district into regions, which is something that was done years ago by a previous superintendent, but it worked. It basically kind of cut the district down and aligned it with schools that were, Lord, I can't think right now, my mind. Feder patterns, I'm sorry. Schools, which are regions, but they're based on feder patterns. So if you in the Hamilton district, you may, may have had Hamilton Elementary, Hamilton Middle, then Hamilton High. So they fed into each other. Where I'm at is South Wind, you know, I have South Wind Elementary, I have Lowrance Elementary, I have Highland Oaks. All of those schools feed into South Wind High. So and the idea behind that is you, you have schools that within the community, the schools are going out and being more visible in the community. And then when you think about the previous leadership, that's all I'm gonna say, the previous leadership, there was not really an emphasis put on an academic plan. So when you talk about moving a district, you have to have a plan around academics. Everything else, in my opinion, is window dressing. My job is to move a school academically, provide a safe and nurturing environment, right? But at the end of the day, I was hired to go to South Wind to move it, because it was a one when I got there. It was a one since 2017. So my job was to move it. It was a D when I got there. It's a B and it's a five in two years. But my job is to move it, right? So when we listen, and I listen intently, man, and I'm just like you, I ask questions. I ask questions. When we started meeting with Dr. Richmond, when he got in the seat, I asked the tough questions. Where are we going? What is your plan? To my surprise, because I had never worked with him in the capacity that, that he's in now, he has a vision. He has a wealth of knowledge that's pertaining to everything from academics to operations, because he's served in those roles, right? So in the way I am, man, I'm 54 years old, right? Not from Memphis, but I've been in Memphis a long time. I judge a person on their character and how they do things and what I see. Because you can tell me all day it's raining outside, but then I walk out there and the sun is shining. But you can tell me it's raining, we walk out there together and it's wet, oh yeah, that's rain. So I judge a person based on that. So far, everything that he said he's gonna do, he's done. Everything that we, principal concerned, when I leave here tonight, I got to go finish working on an agenda, because I send out concerns to all of the principals in the district. They send them to me, I put them in an agenda. We take them to them and we do real time minutes. What real time minutes is, whatever he says, we write it down, we send it out. Ain't no vetting it, ain't changing it up. We send it so you can clean this up. Now you said it. That's what we gonna send to the people, right? Now, we, and we gonna hold him to that. But that's, that's the way that we need to move, right? So when you talk about Dr. Richmond and his vision, he has one. He's working his plan. And so our job as school leaders is to support him in that. And then if it doesn't make sense, say something. I mean, at the end of the day, say something. Because if you don't, then I call that being complicit. And I, you don't know me and I don't know you, man, but what I say, I mean, what I say. And I hold people accountable. So in terms of his vision, he has one. Not only for academics, but for operations. And there's some things you all that he has to rebuild. We had 14,000 employees, we have 10 now. He's not gonna hire 4,000 people, but we've got to bring some services back that we no longer have to support our children and to support our teachers, right? So there's a vision there. I believe in it, because I can see it. And I see where it's going. If I didn't, I wouldn't be sitting in the seat. Now, my presidency ends June 30th, and I ain't gonna lie to you, July 1st, you gonna, I'm gonna be a happy camper. Because it's, because it's double work. It's double work. But what I'm saying is this, sir, there's a vision. If he's really given the opportunity, if our district's given the opportunity to lead, we'll continue to move this district, we'll continue to be a level five district. More and more schools, I believe it was 71 schools in this district increased their letter grade. 71. Some schools went from an F to an A. Y'all know how hard that is? That's hard. Because see, that's not only, that's not only growth, y'all, that's achievement.
That's right.
That's growth and achievement. And Coach Marable already told you, they keep moving the goalposts. You take a test and the kids don't know. We don't know till we get the cut scores, right? So when you think about the district as it is, no, everything ain't right. The board is the board. You can vote.
That's right.
You can vote. In two years, five of them, they seats coming up, get you five more. The ones that just came in, they got four more, three more years, get you, get you some more. But vote. But you don't give up your right, because you mad at the decisions some people made.
That's right.
I don't know if any of y'all in here married. Me and my, me and my wife been married a long time. We don't always get along, right? But I'm not gonna throw her out and she ain't gonna throw me out. So the last thing I'm gonna leave y'all with is this. If you from Memphis, if you ain't from Memphis, but if you for Memphis, everything that was said tonight wasn't about Memphis. It wasn't about us and our kids. Those folks could care less. They could care less. And where I'm from, because I told you, I ain't from here. But where I'm from, if you gonna come in and try to take what I got and what I worked hard for, and the most precious thing that y'all have are your children. And you got some people coming in here gonna tell you how your children are gonna be educated. If that was me, I would be mad as, you know what? It ends with two L's.
Thank you, thank you. Let's give our panelists a round of applause. Also want to thank all of you all for coming out and spending the time with us. Your view and your voice is extremely important. I'm sorry, what was it? You had a last question? Yes, sir, go ahead. Well, I know, I want you to ask a question, not a statement, sir. Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Yes, sir. That is. That's right. One second, one second, one second, one second. Well, just, let's keep it to the question. That's it, keep it to the question. That's a great, that's a great question. Uh, uh, just for time management sake, that is a wonderful question, and thank you for it. And I believe that in terms of social and emotional learning, as you see all of these teachers and educators in here, they know what you're speaking is true. And so we thank you for that. But we also have to lift up and support our teachers who deal with these children every single day, who have emotional issues. You have behavioral specialists in the schools. You have professionals. You heard of our panelists, and they mentioned about what you would lose in terms of mental health professionals. So all of that is at risk. And so we're thankful, it's always the talented 10th, you know? This is the talented 10th. And we're thankful for you all being here again. Another round of applause for our panelists. And thank you all for allowing me to serve as your moderator. And now for our closing, you will hear from Ron Red Wing, our chairman, who has really taken this bull by the horns and he continues to fight. He understands more than some, coming from a business background, knowing what is at stake. You know, when you siphon off. You know, when you siphon off, um, $100,000 from a, from one business, you know, that's, that's still devastation. That might be two jobs. But when you take $2.1 billion from a community, that's devastation. That creates economic disparity. And we are fighting this and we're thankful, um, that we have the opportunity and we're thankful for you. And, and I always want to close by saying this, just follow the money. When you follow the money, you'll know who the enemy is and you'll know who the friends are. Come on, Ron.
Let's give our moderator and the panel a big hand. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. And I'm gonna be really brief here. But before I say anything, I just want you to know that we have a nice dinner meal from Jimmy John's. So, before you leave, be sure to take that. We wanted to do it before, but Ms. Atkins told me we could not eat in the building. What's that, Cordell? And we have a signing sheet, so please, uh, sign in. But just in closing, I, you know, I'm just so grateful, uh, to have this, uh, really, uh, tremendously, uh, informative panel and certainly our moderator. But really having all of you here, so good to see educators and administrators here sharing this information, uh, with this community. And this is being streamed live. So, we're not just talking to the people here, we're talking to all of those who are home. And then I want to thank all of those who have joined in this fight. Certainly, our faith leaders, uh, uh, in part, who, who are part of the Faith Coalition, who've been on board, the NAACP, uh, both of our unions who've been acknowledged this evening, 100 Black Men of Memphis. And there was one other organization, the Black Chamber of Memphis, Memphis for All, and the Equity Alliance. I'm sure I missed somebody, they'll talk about me lies, uh, later, and that's okay. But I, I think the parent asks, what's next? You know, what is the plan? What's the solution? This is not the end. This is the beginning. And this fight is going to continue. And our efforts here are just starting. Because the most important thing we can do as a community is to continue to communicate and educate. And yes, we intend to hold our school board accountable and our new superintendent, who we all have faith in and believe in. But part of this movement is about recognizing our shortcomings and challenging our leaders to address those shortcomings. So, it doesn't end here. It does not end here. So, with that, I want to thank all of you for being here. I want to thank, again, the teachers and administrators, all of our panelists and all of you. And I want to encourage you to continue to spread the word. Pastor Freeman, you can walk up for the closing, uh, prayer as we walk out. And you can bless the food, nice meal from Jimmy John's that was specially prepared for this group tonight. But as Pastor comes, I want to, just again, keep doing what you're doing. And your presence, your presence here speaks volumes. Your presence speaks volumes. Tell a friend to tell another friend. Tell your family members. Continue to educate and spread the word. So, again, thanks for coming. We'll be announcing what's next, because I got a feeling as these bills, Ms. Reed moves forward, we probably got a little more work to do, but session ends, if I'm not mistaken. If not this week, next week. So, we're probably going to know what this is going to look like in the next few days. Either we're gonna have a bill, we're not gonna have a bill, or this could be dead and we could be on to the next thing. So, we'll continue to listen to you. We'll watch our friends in the media. And we'll continue communicating, uh, with our state leaders. I'm gonna be with our governor tomorrow. It's gonna be interesting. Hadn't talked to him since we started this little, uh, nice time we're having. But we'll be in Nashville tomorrow. And, uh, part of why we're in this place is we're in prayer for our leaders. We pray that our words and our deeds, that they hear us. We pray that they hear us. And we're gonna continue to push, we're gonna continue to pray, but we also gonna continue to fight for what's right. So, with that, I'm gonna ask Pastor to come up, give us our closing remarks. Let's give one more big round of applause for our panel and our moderator.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come again. God, I just continue to pray a special prayer for those whom you have placed and appointed for such a time as this. God, I pray that you will cover Mr. Red Wing and those who are leading this fight. God, I pray that those whom you've granted wisdom and knowledge to be able to receive those, those words and be able to receive all of the information and then being able to clarify and, and give it out and distribute it in a way that we can all understand and hear it more clearly. God, I pray that as he goes forth to speak with those who are in power. God, throughout the Bible, you have empowered so many people whom you have called to go to those who are in authority and to be able to speak power unto them. So, God, he's not going in his own strength, but God, he is going in the strength that you will give him. And we pray that you will undergird him, God. God, allow him to speak with clarity, to speak with wisdom. And then, God, unstopp some ears and unstopp some hearts. For God, we know that you are the one who can make all things happen. And God, we thank you for everyone that's here. Continue to allow them to fight and continue to allow them fight with strength and with an intestinal fortitude, God. We pray and thank you for the meal that is going to be received and let it be nourishing for our bodies. Again, we thank you for this gathering. We pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Don't forget now, we got, just if you go to the next room, uh, the food and, uh, sodas and drinks are in the next room. Please, please, take, um, take a meal with you and we may have enough meals to take two.
I'm the celebrity.